That's a lot of water, Auditor Yoder.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'll remain standing, and please join me for the Lord's Prayer. I'm sorry, Auditor Yoder, go ahead. No, no, you're good.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day for our country and our county and our community. Lord, we just asked today that you would bless what what decisions are made and how they are made, and that everyone will act with grace and wisdom. In your name we pray. Amen.
Hey, Rocco.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco. Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the regular meeting dated October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number five is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number six is to amend agenda item dated September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, item number sixteen, to award the lowest responsive and responsible bid as submitted by Carvo Companies, Inc. for the Township Highway one eighty-five C Bushnell Campbell Road project in the amount of three hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars, seventy-five cents, to be paid from Tremble County ARPA funds, and to enter into a contract with Carvo Companies, Inc. for said project. Amendment is necessary to add that the project will be paid out of ARPA fund as listed.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number seven is to amend agenda item dated May first, two thousand and twenty-four, item number twenty-eight, and this was to adopt resolution for the Board of Tremble County Commissioners to authorize payment of county funds to DLZ Ohio, Inc. in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for partial payment for Warren Township's agreement for professional services for the Leuetsburg Dam Desktop Study regarding the Tremble County Metro Parks Leuetsburg Dam Removal Project. And this amendment is necessary to update that the study will be paid out of the fund as listed.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. And the reason for this is, uh, we were gonna pay Warren Township and pass through for them to make the payment. We've decided it's best interest. We just pay, DLZ directly. So that's what the change is here.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number eight is to advertise for bids for the furnishing of all labor, material, and equipment necessary for the Tremble County Fairgrounds four-H Building Replacement Project in accordance with project specifications. And this project contract documents have have been reviewed by the Tremble County Prosecutor's Office.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number nine is to reappoint the individual listed as a member of the Tremble County Local Corrections Planning Board for the respected term listed. And that is for Attorney Laura Burzansky, Director, Ohio Public Defender's Office, for a three-year term, October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, to October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number ten is to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that a public hearing is not requested on the liquor permit application listed. And that is a transfer classes C one and two from Tamarkin Company doing businesses, Howland, Howland Getgo, number thirty-one fifty-one, to Getgo Operating LLC doing businesses, Howland Getgo, number thirty-one fifty-one in Howland Township.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute on behalf of Tremble County the thirty-seventh renewal of the Victims of Crime Act, BOKA, and the State Victims Assistant Act, SVAA, grant application proposal for the Tremble County Victim slash Witness Division of the Tremble County Prosecutor's Office. The grant is for the period of October first, two thousand and twenty-four, through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to adopt a resolution reappointing Attorney Eric Fink of Lake County as a member of the Northeast Ohio Community Initiative Program, NeoCap Facility Governing Board, for a three-year term expiring November ninth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to rename existing Fund Number two zero seven to BCI Electronic Reporting. This is for the purpose of setting up a federal reimbursable grant that the court has received in the amount of one thousand seventy-five dollars from the Ohio Attorney General's Office pertaining to electronically reporting juvenile case dispositions to BCI.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, based upon the substance of Tremble County Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Jason Toth's October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four letter to the Tremble County Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners gives its informed consent to the Tremble County Prosecutor's Office, including Mr. Toth, to represent multiple clients, including Bezetta Township, in the review of an RC five-five-three-five-point-zero-eight agreement to reservice McClery Jacoby Road in Bezetta Township drafted by Tanya Rogers Esquire on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the company listed, and that's three permits for Embridge Gas, Ohio.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits for fleet vehicles requested by the companies listed. And those companies are Dayton Freight Lines, Inc., Garth Bonar Trucking and Excavating, and FedEx Freight, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item seventeen is to concur with the Tremble County Engineer to close the following roadway, Morford East Road, Township Highway two seventy-two in Kinsman Township between Kinsman Ridge Road and State Route seven for culvert replacement, closing date Monday, November fourth through Friday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number eighteen is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute on behalf of Tremble County the Renewal Certification Application, Ohio Natural Gas Governmental Aggregators, with the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio Docketing Division. The current certificate is effective for the period of January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three through January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. And the application term is January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five through January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to accept maintenance bond number Q eight-six dash six-three-seven-zero-two-five-eight issued by Erie Insurance for seven sanitary lateral connections for low and moderate income households in the heat-and-shoot project area funded through the PY two thousand and twenty-two CDBG Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program and the American Rescue Plan Act installed by MJD Excavating, Inc. MJD Excavating, Inc. requested final payment for the completed work inspected and approved by the Tremble County Sanitary Engineers' Office. The maintenance bond is in the amount of twenty percent, ten thousand two hundred eighty dollars of the final project cost, fifty-one thousand four hundred dollars, and is valid for a two-year, two years commencing September sixth, two thousand and twenty-four and ending September sixth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number twenty is to authorize the advertisement of a public notice in the Tribune Chronicle on November first, two thousand and twenty-four, announcing the timeframe for and location of the request for price proposal packages for the PY twenty-three Community Development Block Grant, Community Development Program, Revolving Loan Fund, and this is for Howland Scope Center Improvements Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Mr. Robert Dillard from the position of Labor, Pay Range three, twenty years, nineteen seventy-nine per hour, to the position of Maintenance Worker, Package Plant, Pay Range eight, twenty years, twenty-seven sixty-seven per hour, with the Tremble County Sanitary Engineers Department effective Thursday, October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is to approve or deny construction of County Project Number twenty-nine dash S dash nine-seven, the Meadow Brook Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project located in Warren Township. The public hearing for this project was held on October third, two thousand and twenty-four. Results of the public hearing and public comment period indicated ninety-eight point two percent of the property owners are in favor of said project, and one point eight zero percent are opposed based on the number of service connections.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is to authorize the purchase of a used two thousand and twenty-three Ram fifteen-hundred Tradesman Pickup Truck with fourteen thousand eight hundred and ten miles from Jeff's Motor Cars for use by the Tremble County Sanitary Engineers Department in the total amount of twenty-three thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty-four is to authorize the purchase of a used two thousand and twenty-two Ram fifteen-hundred Tradesman Pickup Truck with eight thousand one hundred twenty-one miles from Stadium GM Superstore, Inc. for use by the Tremble County Sanitary Engineers Department in the total amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty-five is to remove from table item number twenty-nine, Commissioner's Meeting Agenda under the date of August seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and this was to approve a School Resource Officer Agreement between Tremble County Commissioners, Tremble County Sheriff Paul Monroe, and Joseph Badger Local School District Board of Education for Police Protection Services for the Joseph Badger Local School District, its buildings and activities, personnel, students, and public on-site for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five academic school year, and for the amount of sixty-three thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Motion to approve the removal from table?
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Yes.
So do we have to, Madam Clerk, do we have to reread that for a motion to accept, or?
For item twenty, I have twenty-seven on here, but.
Oh, I see. I see. I see. Okay.
Okay, so this was, this one is to modify and approve a School Resource Officer Agreement by and between the Tremble County Commissioners, Tremble County Sheriff Paul Monroe, and Joseph Badger Local School District Board of Education for Police Protection and Services for Joseph Badger Local School District, its buildings and activities, personnel, students, and public on-site for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five academic fiscal school year, July first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. The Joseph Badger Local School District agrees to pay the Tremble County Sheriff's Office seventy thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-four cents to be invoiced by the Tremble County Sheriff's Office.
And just before we do that, let the record reflect that. Agenda item twenty-five, we removed from table and we approved. So just so that I don't want there to be any confusion for that. So there was a removal from table and then approving that agenda item. And I will move Agenda item twenty-seven forward, please.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. I want to commend also Major Villanueva for, uh, revamping this stuff. I had a meeting with him. And it seems like he's got all costs covered in this. He did his legwork on this, and thank you for updating it. Absolutely.
Okay, so next item twenty-eight is to approve a School Resource Officer Agreement between the Tremble County Commissioners, Tremble County Sheriff Paul Monroe, and Bristol Local School District Board of Education for Police Protection and Services for the Bristol Local School District, its buildings and activities, personnel, students, and public on-site for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, I believe that should be, academic school year, July first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Bristol Local School District agrees to pay the Tremble County Sheriff's Office seventy thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-four cents.
Motion to approve with the said changes in dates?
I'll second that.
That should have been changed. Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Okay, item twenty-nine is to approve the purchase of five Vesta Command Posts from AT&amp;T, the current nine-one-one CPE Maintenance Provider in the amount of one hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars from the ARPA fund as listed, received under House Bill four eighty-one as authorized by Resolution of the Tremble County Board of Commissioners on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item thirty is to accept and award the proposal submitted by Motorola Solutions, Inc. for two MCC seventy-five-hundred E operator positions upgrade of existing MCC seventy-five-hundred positions to seventy-five-hundred E in the amount of two hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars from the ARPA fund as listed, as authorized by the Resolution of the Tremble County Board of Commissioners on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, and to further authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board, to execute any and all documents required for this agreement on behalf of Tremble County.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item thirty-one is to accept and approve the proposal submitted by Motorola Solutions, Inc. for four MCC seventy-five-hundred E remote operator positions, ACS, and implementation in the amount of three hundred fifty-four thousand dollars as authorized by the Resolution of the Tremble County Board of Commissioners on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, and to further authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute any and all documents required for this agreement on behalf of Tremble County.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item thirty-two is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds, and this is for scope access family services. And Commissioners, on the next page in the center, says a one-time grant to access scope in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars for the purchase of AED and first aid equipment for each of the six scope senior centers.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item thirty-three is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Tremble County Commissioners and Access Family Services, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel, to provide funds for the purchase of AED and first aid equipment for each of the six scope senior centers, and the Board of County Commissioners allocates the sum of eighteen thousand dollars to access.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. We don't have anybody here from scope, do we?
Don't believe so.
Okay, we'll get with Mr. Wilson at another time and make the presentation.
Yep.
Okay, next time.
Item thirty-four is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds, and this is for Bolandale Christian Church Food Pantry. And Commissioners, on the next page, this is a one-time grant to the Bolandale Christian Church in the amount of sixty-two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars to be used to convert the current food pantry space to a client choice model for distribution of the food assistance to eligible residents.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Do you have Mr. Mackey here?
Yeah, we have the other.
Oh, that's right. That's right. I'm sorry.
I'm thirty-five.
I apologize. I'm ahead of my song.
To enter into an agreement between the Board of Tremble County Commissioners and Bolandale Christian Church Food Pantry as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel to provide funds required to enable the food pantry to convert the current food pantry space to a client choice model for the distribution of food assistance to eligible residents, and to, and the Board of County Commissioners allocates the sum of sixty-two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars to the food pantry.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. Yeah, this time I say, I guess we have a guest here from the food pantry.
Mr. Mackey, if you'd like to come up with a check presentation.
Anything you'd like to say, or just get the check? Take the money and run. You can approach the mic over there. Give us your name and. There's a microphone there if you want to say.
If you want to say anything, it's up to you. Your name for the record.
It's Charles Mackey. Yeah, my wife started Bolandale Food Pantry in two thousand and eleven. We went from four little white shelves in the basement to now we're doing roughly two tons of food a month.
Wow.
And basically, the one thing that I see a lot of is I do a lot of emergency food distributions. And mainly, it's because of a court order change in family status and the funds from taking funds from, or the children's custody from the parents to a grandparent, those funds don't get transferred at the same time. And it puts such a load on the grandparents to feed, you know, two young children and that. And that's one thing we need to work on and fix is to figure out how that in a court order like that, changing custody, we also change the finances so that we don't end up with these issues. Because I can do, I can do an emergency food distribution in twenty minutes. That's what it takes me to get from my house to the food pantry. Is we have all kinds of stuff. I've got probably on hand right now, I've probably got four tons of food frozen and bagged and canned and so on and so forth. And and I don't know when we get all this going. I've been talking to Kim Peters or Kim Brock at Second Harvest. Are they going to be able to keep up with the way we're going to go do business? Because, you know, they get, they get a lot of government warehouse stuff. And it's, you know, it's not low sodium, it's not low sugar, it's not this, that, or whatever. And we're seeing right now, we've got seven clients right now that comes an hour early. And we let them pick through because their doctors told them, you know, get yourself on the right diet and everything. So we've got some shelves labeled with the five entities of what you should be eating each and every day. And we allow them to pick through and sign out and go on their way. Yeah, but, you know, it's a shame today that we have to have food pantries, you know?
Yeah, there are a lot of systemic issues that culturally and socially that are larger than the Board of Commissioners, unfortunately. We try to do what we can at the local level.
A lot, a lot of things that I see, though, is people losing hours, work hours. You know, some people were working four days a week and they get cut down to two days a week. And that puts a drag on, on them. But hey, we do what we can. We do what we can. We have our, our own, oh, God, our own hygienist from, what you call it, from Ohio State Extension Group, Garvin McCorkle is our nutritionist. And Garvin has a following of people that are now starting to look at how that they are eating, so. But no, I want to thank everybody for all the effort that went into this project. And now it's make a bank account, find a reliable contractor, and start work sometime in January.
Thank you, Mr. Mash.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
We have a check presentation.
Would you like to come up, Mr. Mackey? Have you got a picture? Where do you think your mom's got the link? You gotta go check.
And yeah.
Okay, number.
Thirty-six.
Yes.
Item thirty-six, to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds, and this is for Bristol Township for an ambulance. And down near the bottom, I want, this is a one-time grant to Bristol Township in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to be used for the purchase of an ambulance for use by the Bristol Township Fire Department.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item thirty-seven is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Tremble County Commissioners and Bristol Township, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel, to provide funds required to enable the township to purchase an ambulance for use by the Bristol Township Fire Department, which is essential to continue the provision of safety services, especially with the increase of volume of calls since the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And the Board of County Commissioners allocates the sum of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to the township.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. Okay, we have our chief here, and chief, I wanna first thank you for being so persistent. And I wanna thank your, um, trustees for being so patient. And I wanna thank everyone that helped out along with this process to make sure we had the grant just right, including Mr. Peterson in Bloomfield for his advice. This one was a tough one for whatever reason, but we, we pushed it through, we said we were gonna do it, we did, and be happy to, uh. Be there when you do a ribbon cutting for this new ambulance when it shows up, so.
Mayor, uh, Chief Bristol Township. Uh, first, thank you, um, this, this is a huge boost to our township, the taxpayers. Um, I, I always like to take the opportunity to, to, to speak about the fire service. And we have to change the way we're doing business. Uh, the burden of taxpayers is enormous, you know, when I started forty-some years ago. We bought a fire truck for a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. We're getting ready to buy another one, uh, they only last for twenty years. Replace that same identical truck is over a million dollars. Something happened along the way, um, whatever reason, you know, we, we can't do this the same way anymore, you know, we, we have to consolidate, we have to work together. To spread that cost over. Different townships, two, three, four, five, six, whatever. Um, so i- if there's any way you can work towards. Uh, facilitating that either talks or even, uh, you know, the state government or federal government, you know, any influence you may have. That would help us facilitate that process. Um, it's greatly appreciated.
Fortunately, we do have some joint fire districts, you know, with, uh, across the county, but, but, but we need to continue to collaborate and regionalize. Because the cost is through the roof and, and townships like Bristol can't afford it, I, and, um, it's, it's just, it's becoming, uh, uh, a, a huge, uh, problem because. Obviously, we prioritize safety and service before anything, and, um, it, it's, uh, escalating costs across the board, so.
Um, but this helps, this, this is tremendous boost to our, uh, to the township and, uh, you know, on behalf of myself, the several employees. Uh, and the citizens and trustees, uh, we thank you.
Thank you, thank you, chief. Glad to be able to do this.
Yes, absolutely. Took a little while, but we gotta. Congratulations.
Item thirty-eight is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds. And this is for Stillwagon Road Water Improvements Project, Stormwater and Sewer Projects, and Commissioners on the next page below the table. Whereas by way of a resolution dated June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, the Commissioners approved allocating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds. For the Stillwater, Stillwagon Road Water Improvements Project. And whereas since the approval of the Stillwagon Project, costs have increased significant, significantly. Whereas the county has determined to reallocate the funds that were not used in the above referenced projects to be used toward the completion of the Stillwagon Project. Which am, which amounts to the total of one hundred forty thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-one cents of ARPA funds reallocated. Whereas the county further wishes to allocate an additional eighty-five thousand dollars of ARPA funds to be used for the completion of the Stillwagon Project. And whereas the total amount of ARPA funds allocated for the Stillwagon Project is now four hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-one cents.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. Hey, nice and smooth, I conducts our regular agenda items, um, for today. And, and Commissioner, just to, so the public knows, I mean, we, we spend what looks like, you know, a lot of yeses and just going through the motions. We have workshops where we spend hours, literally, we spent three, I think, three and a half hours yesterday on some of this stuff, so, um, you know, what. You, you, you kinda don't see how the, the sausage is made, you're just, you know, just seeing the, just tasting it, I guess, for restaurateurs. There were changes, there were modifications, there were changes, there were negotiations, there were, uh, concessions made. To get to the point where we can come in and just do that, and without, you know, this is the way I believe it's supposed to be done. And the way I'm looking forward to it being done in the next year. Of, of being able to have meetings like that and getting the, the bugs worked out on workshop day, um. I failed to say at the beginning of the meeting, there, there'll be no meeting next week, next week is, uh, Election Day on Tuesday. We encourage everybody to get out and vote, and, um, we have, uh. So we're gonna take the week off and, uh, we'll double up on the agenda the following week. Our next public workshop will be Wednesday, November thirteenth. And Thursday, November fourteenth, the next regular meeting. Now, the, because of the holiday again, um, Veterans Day. We, uh, things will be delayed a day, so we're looking at Wednesday, Thursday, um, for that, so please make note of that, and we'll make sure that we reiterate that. Uh, to Ray, I see the Tribune's not here today, but, um, we'll reiterate that. Do you want anything for the good of, uh, the county? Excited to see the Stillwagon Project, uh, the entire project, um, will be a go here, I know we've put some ARPA money into that. Uh, that's, that's obviously critically important to those homeowners there and, uh, the mobile command center, what we're able to do just in case, you know, we don't have another PS app as far goes, as far as go down. Uh, this is, um, gonna give us, um, you know, a lot more security and safety. Uh, when it comes to our mobile command center, and, and if anything, God forbid, were to happen to nine-one-one, uh, you know, we could transition rather quickly, so. Two, two very important things on the agenda today for me, so, uh, glad we got them done. Well, and, and with that too, we have, uh. Stillwagon is one piece of the puzzle of what needs done in the county with infrastructure. You know, as we're laying the groundwork for future development, as future economic, um, development here in this county that we know is coming. Um, part of our responsibility as Commissioners is to, uh, lay the groundwork for that to happen, so that when it's here, we're prepared. We have to listen to our economic advisors on what the needs are. One of the top needs that's been brought to us by the, not only the Chamber of Commerce, but Valley Vision twenty fifty, um, Lake to River Jobs, Ohio. And we've been working with our sanitary engineer to make sure that we get, um, the groundwork for infrastructure as far as sewer and water. To provide housing, housing right now is, is the utmost importance, uh, in our county. If anybody sold a house recently, you know, the houses sell very, very quickly. And people that want to come here, uh, we have literally lots of workers. That are working in Lordstown at Foxconn, lots of workers that are working at some of the newer, um, the Energy Center and other places. That are living as far away as Cranberry, Pennsylvania. And Soul in Ohio, and they have to commute here, uh, because of lack of proper housing for them to be able to actually move here. So, we, we need to keep that as a consideration as far as significance. Um. That that has gotta be our top priority into the next couple of years. Um, we have, uh, some things in the works to expand sewer and water. And we're always working that, and our charge that we have to our sanitary engineering department is to continue on with that as much as they possibly can. Same charge we have with all of our elected officials to lay the groundwork for future development, future, um. Economic boom in this county and not, not to hinder it in any way, shape, or form. Um, with that said, we have a. Meeting tomorrow again, um, to receive some grant money that, uh, Gary has, uh, given back. And then hopes to get money back from that. We, um. Were rated differently than we were last year with the same project, it was just kinda putting a wrench in the plans. Um, I deem that project, uh, crane drive as being at the foremost of importance for us as Commissioners to move forward in this county. And we, we moved it forward with two other projects a couple of months ago. Um, we were scored on that project last year, scored very highly, and. Gary gave the money back because we just weren't quite ready for the project yet. In anticipation of getting that money back again this year and being able to, uh, to move forward, uh, in accordance with. What everybody wants, you know, more housing and more infrastructure. Um, unfortunately, the scoring panel, um. Didn't, I, I believe, take into consideration the significance of that project and how. Important that is to me as a Commissioner, and, and I believe to our Board of Commissioners, um, where that is. We want a fair shot at that, we, we have a chance for an appeal tomorrow, um, which we will be going, um, to make that appeal tomorrow. There's many different things we looked at, um. We consulted with the prosecutor again, even again today, and, and the, the best move we have is, is just to appeal to this board tomorrow. And, and stress the significance of this project having to go forward for us having to do this now. Well, and, and Commissioner, I totally agree, and I, I, uh, obviously Eastgate's the clearinghouse for these funds. But Eastgate is also the, the entity that's, that's taking on the comprehensive housing strategy that we allocated through project or, um. Uh, Valley Vision, uh, twenty fifty, uh, so, so. They understand the importance of the housing component of this, so hopefully that gets through to the. Voting members at Eastgate that, um, you know, they, they see that this project is not just about public health and safety and about, um. You know, uh, uh, obviously the, 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 the importance of that, but, but for economic development and for affordable housing, which is a crisis right now. Uh, not just around, especially here, but around the country. Um, people cannot find affordable housing, whatever we can do as a Board of Commissioners to facilitate that, I think it's incumbent upon us to do that, so. Um, this is one way, this is one project that's gonna. Help in that aspect, so I would hope that the Board, uh, the Scoring Committee sees that, uh. Uh, because that's an important component to this, it's not just about public health and safety, and that's important. But it's about future development, it's about what's impacting our area right now, and the immediate, one of the most immediate issues we have. That we're facing right now is affordable housing, and, um, this is a way that we can kinda stem the tide. And one of the things I'm realizing too as a Commissioner, and I'm still relatively new to this job, and been here a year and a half. Is there is politics involved with this job, and that the word politics is there for a reason. And everybody wants to get a program funded, everyone wants their certain pet project, everyone wants to use the political pressures they have, the friends they have, the. The, uh, clout they have to kind of get their projects through. Um. So when I look at this thing is I want to. Appeal to the committee tomorrow. Um. And try as much as I can to keep politics out of the deal. And in good faith, go and, and stress to them, this is what we prioritize the most as a Board of Commissioners. This is what we wanna push forward through, there's three projects. That we pushed through in August, if we had to rank them, this sanitary one is our top one, this is the one we want more than anything. There's also a bridge project and a road project. Not that they're less significant with anything, they're all important, there's a lot of cities and townships that are gonna receive funding from this. Um, that are gonna benefit all of our citizens, but if we had to pick one that is the most important to us right now. That is the one, the crane drive is that is the most important one tomorrow, so rather than play the political. Maneuverings and stuff that, that have been done in the past, um, after consultation and thinking and deep thought and many meetings with this. I think our, our sanitary engineer has crafted a, a great plan. Um, to move forward with this in accordance with what we want. And, and I would hope tomorrow that when we make our appeal, it doesn't fall on deaf ears, and they look at it and see that we. The decision makers in this county view this as the highest of significance to our community, um, and that, that, if they just scored again. With that in mind of, of the significance of the project, significance of, of the future, um. I think then we, we fall in and we get all of our pro, projects funded, uh, and, and we can walk away. Better as a community by doing so. Well, well, I think that the, if it was scored the same way as it was last year. And, and the conditions haven't changed by any means, the conditions are exactly the same, so it should be scored the exact same way it was last year, o- o- on its merit. Not anything to do with, you know, uh, there, there's been talk about, you know, um, OPWC deadlines, Gary has met every deadline. That the OPWC has, he, he's worked under those things, he has several funding sources that he needs to juggle all at once, that's why these deadlines are sort of fluid. Um. And they recognize that, and they, they, he's never been denied, uh, a deadline on that, so. I, I think that that's, that's the difference, is that he's juggling several different funding sources, trying to get these to match time-wise. As were some of these other projects, there may be only one funding source, that's OPWC, and, and that's what they're going after, so. For sanitary and water projects, it's a little bit more difficult than it would be for bridge and road, road projects. And the OPWC realizes that, they've granted every single extension to Gary, so, um, I feel confident in our argument going in there, and, and hopefully they have a change of heart. And I, I hope they do too, and they said they are bringing in, one of the decision makers from Columbus is gonna be there tomorrow for her to overlook it herself to make sure. Things are fair, not that they're not fair, but I think if they look at it and they add the weight of what we want, the decision makers, what we want is our, our top project. That should carry some weight, I would hope they'd have the respect of carrying the weight that this is what we feel is best for our citizens to move this project forward. And, and if they score accordingly, that way, taking that into consideration, remove personalities out of it, and what is best use of taxpayer dollars. That's gonna be the best bang for the buck, that is gonna impact the biggest amount of people and create the biggest economic impact in our community. That is what I firmly believe is it, and, and I'll make that appeal tomorrow, and I hope it doesn't fall on deaf ears, and, um. We'll go in there kinda with hat in hand and say this is what we want, and please listen to our appeal.
Agreed.
And hopefully it's fair. I know that's news that some people didn't wanna hear right now, but, um, after consultation, that this is, we're gonna play fair, we're gonna play fair across the board. And we're gonna make our appeal of this is what we want the most.
Agreed.
Okay, anybody from the public have anything for the good of Trumbull County? We have any.
Go ahead.
Any callers on the line? Pardon me? Uh, if you have any callers on the line, you can hit star six, we'll give you an opportunity.
If not, make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion, and, uh, we will see you back here in a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Thank you all.